Is everybody ready? I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And tonight Julie Orwin is with us, the President of Congregation Beth Hagavut. Come on up Julie.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Kavanaugh and board members. Oh, I have to do that. Dear Lord, tonight we come to you and first of all, we want to give you thanks for the beautiful town, the beautiful mountains that surround us, the beautiful lake, and the blessing for having given us so much richness. We pray tonight, please, to give our elected officials the knowledge and wisdom, understanding and love to overcome the issues facing our town, our state and our country. Please, your Lord, also bring peace to this world. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Julie. Roll call, please, Bev.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Here.
Vice Mayor Legay?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember Yates?
Present.
Councilmember DePorter?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Okay, thanks Bev. See a lot of green out there. Happy St. Patrick's Day, everyone. The staff has asked me to read a press release because we've been inundated with phone calls and emails and as you know, Town Hall is closed tomorrow, so hopefully this will supply all the information that people need for Saturday. There will be a presidential rally in Fountain Park on Saturday, March 19th, 2016. Presidential candidate Donald J. Trump will hold a rally in Fountain Hills, Arizona, beginning at 8:00 AM. Fountain Park will welcome guests into the park to hear the candidate speak. Trump is scheduled to take the stage at 11:00 AM. Guests to the rally are asked to please remember the following. Parking. All public lots will be open. Please see the map, which they will have posted, but you all know where you can park. Please be aware of and abide by police-enforced road closures and detours. What to bring if you're planning on attending. State-issued ID. No chairs, umbrellas, large bags. Food. Water only. Bags are subject to search. Clear purses are encouraged. Service animals only. Event tickets are free but are required for admittance to register. You can go to EventBrite. That's E-V-E-N-T-B-R-I-T-E on online. A non-ticketed viewing location will be designated onsite on the day of the event. This is located in Fountain Park. You all know where it is. Any further information would be just donaldjtrump.com. So, hope that gives everybody enough information. And now, I don't have anything on economic development. We didn't have any meetings since our last meeting, so we're going to go right to the Fountain Hills Rotary Board Member. Bill Papel has given us an update regarding the musical playground.
Thank you very much. We've got a little bit of an update. We also want to get your permission on one other matter. And most of you have had a chance to take a look at this before, but basically, we now have a new partner as well. We have the Fountain Hills Rotary Club joining with us and making a substantial financial contribution to the park, along with the Four Peaks Rotary Club. And so consequently, we're going to name the park area essentially, the Rotary Community Musical Park, and that will be the title of the particular area. We've also increased our instruments. We've gone from 12 instruments to 14 instruments. We have changed the configuration a little bit, in that originally, we had a 22-foot diameter. We now have a 24-foot diameter with a couple of potential offsets essentially. We would like for you all to consider the possibility of allowing us to add a couple of additional items, that is shade sales and also security cameras. And essentially, with regard to the shade sales, we don't know quite frankly if we could afford the sales at this point in time. We're probably looking at anywhere from 15,000 to $22,000, $23,000 in order to provide those. If we did provide those, we would do something that would match the shade sales that are currently in the park with the same color combination and that sort of thing, working with Mark Mayer as far as that look is concerned, if the council decides to approve that particular thing. We've also considered adding some video surveillance down there, and then we would do that and have to simply pay the expense of installing that particular equipment. Essentially, our fundraising currently is at 50% of the instruments. We have only seen a few people, and those have been primarily nonprofit organizations to date, because we didn't want to take away from the Four Peaks Rotary Golf Tournament that we have this coming Monday, which is our primary fundraiser. So, we will start our endeavors really after next Monday, as far as talking with business people who are concerned with regard to sponsorship and that sort of thing effectively. You can see from this particular slide, which you've also looked at, that basically, it's a conglomeration of the town of Fountain Hills, Four Peaks Rotary, Fountain Hills Rotary, and the Fountain Hills Cultural and Civic Association, who are really entering into this partnership.
The Greenie of downtown.
And the Greenie of downtown is of course, a committee of the cultural association. Thank you. This is the original area down here, where the musical park would be located between the two playgrounds. Essentially, this is the plan that we originally presented to you, and you can see the little instruments there that are clustered in the center of all those trees. The trees have been planted. The ground cover is down. The sprinkler system is in. We are going to do a blue stake with regard to the electrical equipment, if you permit us to put in the shade sales and if we have the financing to do so. Essentially, today, this is what the site looks like. It has been landscaped. You can see the essential layout as far as the site is concerned. And with the shade sale, you can see the diagram that's drawn in there. It would either be one shade sale or it would be a combination of shade sales, really depending upon the landscape architect that we're working with and depending upon the vendor who's providing the shade sales and what does the job for that particular area. And so basically, this evening, what I would like to do besides giving you this update is ask for your approval to give us the opportunity to further investigate the shade sales, and if in fact, we can afford those shade sales, to add those to the plan.
Okay.
Anybody have any questions?
Questions? Alan? Councilman Magazine?
Just a comment or two. I think this is a very exciting initiative for our young people. I really applaud you for this, for moving forward with this. I mean, I for one think shade sales would be terrific, especially given the heat that we see during various times of the year. At the last meeting, I had raised the possibility of putting in some benches for parents, grandparents, and so on. I understand that we might be able to get some donated. Is that correct? Has anything been done on that?
We are going to work with that, but Mark has indicated, Mark Mayer that is, of the town, has indicated to us that he has some potential people who already would like to sponsor the benches, much as they've done other benches in the area. And so consequently, we'll be working with Mark and trying to develop that. And if Mark doesn't have enough people, we could certainly try to raise funds that would be enough to cover those kinds of expenses. We'd like to do that.
I don't recall. What is your total budget for this?
It's going to be variable, depending upon the shade sales and that sort of thing, but we're looking at a minimum of $70,000. It could be upwards of 70,000 to 80,000, $85,000, depending upon what we do.
Is that, okay, exclusive of the shade sales? We're talking around 70,000 or something?
$70,000.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Yates?
Thank you. Bill, excellent job to echo my colleague there. We're all thrilled about having this there, and it's going to really dress up that area. I guess Grady, this may be addressed to you or our attorney, since it's not an agendized item and he's asking for direction, do we just verbally kind of just say, hey, we like this, yeah, go ahead and get it?
It's very clear from just the staff seeing you shake your heads and nod your heads. If there's consensus for us to move forward, you're right, we cannot actually do much more than that, so.
Okay, Bill?
Okay. It's all recorded, so we've got it taken care of. Any other questions?
Thank you, ma'am.
No, great job.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to have an update from Captain David Latourneau regarding the truck traffic enforcement. This also has generated a lot of phone calls and emails, so hopefully, your update will give us some answers.
Hopefully. Thanks. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Talking to the council quite a bit, I know what the concerns have been with the truck traffic. So just enlighten a little bit of what I've done before I go into the statistics that we have. I contacted the general contractor as far as the moving the dirt from Adaro Canyon and also Fire Rock. The contractors at Adaro are using one company, which they have a mechanic onsite. I haven't really noticed that group being as big a problem in town as the Fire Rock. The Fire Rock, talking to their contractor, a very informative guy, sounds like he's really doing what he can to not cause problems for town. I think his problem is, he's hiring private contracted drivers. Some of the things he's doing to alleviate the headaches is paying the drivers by the hour instead of by the load. Where paying by the load would make them want to do as many loads as they could in a day, paying by the hour, it doesn't matter how many loads they do. So, there are things that that contractor is doing to make it better, but once they leave the yard, or Fire Rock, where they're digging, is where the problems begin. The drivers are supposed to do safety checks on their vehicles every morning before they start. Now, we're not there for that, so I can't verify that, but some of the stats I will give you in a few minutes will show you that that's probably not happening with every driver, with every truck. As you know, last week, we had a wreck right in front of the high school, truck to truck. The truck, one of the trucks lost its brakes and sideswiped the other, caused quite a bit of damage to the trucks, not really any damage to the town or the roadway or plants. But that's what really spiked our interest as far as what they're maybe looking for or not looking for on their inspections. To date, we've made several stops. Well, let me back up for one quick second. Part of the truck issue is to really get into a truck and break it down and see, safety-wise, if it's good to go, requires a truck inspector. The sheriff's office used to have a unit that did that all the time. We don't have that unit anymore, but we have two truck inspectors, that I've brought one out several days out here to help with the inspection of the trucks. So when my patrol guys are out making stops, they don't have quite the knowledge or the tools to get into the truck. They can write speeding tickets, they can write tickets on the roadway like they could any other car, but to really get in and tear the trucks apart requires special training. In saying that, I've had a truck inspector come out several days and help us with that. And that deputy has given us quite a few stops, actually has been able to pull seven trucks out of service, meaning off the road, for equipment violations. That could be anything from tires to the brakes not working properly, to other issues with the truck. In those several stops, that deputy has written, just the deputy, I'm not talking about my patrol guys, 33 tickets in about a two-and-a-half-week period, or maybe two-week period. Out of those seven that out of service, three have been towed, meaning they weren't fit to be even on the road, and then, like I said, one accident. We have made a stop, I think it's fair to note, we've, one stop, clean truck, nothing wrong with it. So we're not just hammering the trucks, we're just, if there's equipment violations, we're citing it. One of the issues that we struggle with in town, as they leave Fire Rock and come through town, to really make a good stop, you need an area to pull them over, a flat area, we can check the load, the weight of the load and those kind of things. And as they go through town, that's not so easy to find. We don't want to cause another accident by pulling them over. And if you don't know, they're hauling through town, making their way up to Rio Verde, down Forest Road to the Trilogy Golf Course that's under construction out there where they're building houses. So all the dirt is being dumped out there.
So for people who don't know, can you just tell us the roads that they're going on, from Fire Rock? Let's start there.
So they leave Fire Rock, they go up Shea. I'm going to ask my deputy in the back, Mark. Mark, can you give me the exact route with roads?
Shea to Palisades.
Shea to Palisades.
Palisades to Fountain Hills Boulevard.
Fountain Hill, or, to Fountain Hills Boulevard.
And then north out of town.
North out of town. So it's, it's a short route, but it is right through town. One of the things we were initially asked to look at was that the loads were spilling out, and if that was a problem in the beginning, we really haven't seen that where it's spilling out. But because it's that bright red dirt coming out of Fire Rock, the dust, you can see all over the road through town, but I don't believe, we haven't seen it, we followed many trucks, the patrol guys have followed many trucks. It's not busting out at the seams, it's more dust that's rising out because of the load and the drive itself. We haven't really witnessed too heavy of loads yet. Maybe in the beginning, before we really got into it, but not now.
Mayor and council, if I may, just to add to what Captain is stating, we also have hours of operation that are regulated, so that is one thing that we're doing to make sure that they're not doing this at night or all hours of the day. We also, as I understand, the staff, well, if they see that there's a problem with the spillage out on the roads, the contractor understands that they're to get out there with their street sweepers, and they've been very cooperative with that as well. But as we're hearing, the big concern is the safety and the trucks driving through town and making sure that all of their safety equipment is operable. And right now, there's a self-check, where they do that first thing before they leave the sites.
There's a break now from Fire Rock. Yesterday was their last day for a week and a half. I intend to follow up with the contractor over there and tell him, let him know what's going on and what we're finding, because I haven't followed up with him yet, because technically, those aren't his trucks. They're just people he's bringing in. But he's going to have to do more due diligence to make sure, someone's going to have to make sure those trucks are safe to be on the road. The Adaro Canyon project has a mechanic onsite, and we haven't been finding problems with their trucks. So that will be a recommendation I make to them. Before those trucks, the drivers are supposed to do the inspection, but we're finding several trucks, most of those seven that we took out of service were brake issues, meaning they weren't working properly.
Yeah.
And so, my plan is to get with that contractor next week while they're off, and let him know the numbers we have, and have him address it. Otherwise, we're just going to continue to write more tickets and knock more off the road if they're not safe to be on the road.
Yeah, it's really troubling, not only the amount of violations, but the kind. I mean, brakes and they're going on Fountain Hills Boulevard with the big hills.
Correct. When, you're 100% right. When my patrol guys go out, who are in marked cars, it's not as easy to hide or get into a location, because the speed is one thing, that is bad, I don't want to lessen that, but the stop signs, especially that stop sign in front of the high school as they're coming down the hill. That's been a big concern, but when we sit on it, I don't know if they're getting out on their CBs, if one sees us and they spread the word, but it's a little more difficult for us to catch them. My patrol guys aren't having as much success as the truck inspector, because that deputy can pull them over for very, very minimal reasons, where the patrol guys have to wait for a speed violation or a stop sign violation, those type of things.
Well, you know, we of course appreciate the fact that, you know, you're doing your job and you're going after them in any way that you can, but I guess maybe my question is to Grady, well, let's say that the captain goes and talks to this
Contractor.
This contractor, and he goes, yeah, yeah, you know, we'll take care of it, and then he starts the same thing. I mean, what's our recourse if we find out that they're not, they're just lip service as far as they're going to, you know, take care of these trucks, because they can't be on our road with faulty brakes?
Absolutely. In fact, I've been in touch with MCO to obtain the contact with these people, and so, what I like to do is set up something so we can go over our concerns with them. So, there's two different operators, as we said, at the two different locations, one with Fire Rock Parcel B and also with Adaro, but I think that's what we need to do, is communicate our concerns, because my understanding is, the one project will be pretty much done by the end of April, the other one I think will be done in June with hauling dirt. So, that's, that's the issue. This is going to be going on for at least a couple more months.
Well, now the captain is saying that the main issue is with what's coming up from Fire Rock.
Correct.
Okay, so let's say we get no results, and can we, can we just say, sorry, you can't come through Fountain Hills? Can we just stop it? Can we do that if, if he continues to find all of these violations?
I think that's a legal issue, and I'll refer that to the town attorney, because it's beyond an operational issue. I think there's things like interstate, or not interstate, but there's commerce.
Madam, members of the council, I don't know that you can deny access to McDowell Mountain Road once it's outside of your boundaries for the through traffic, because part of that is a through route from Shea Boulevard all the way out to north of here. So, you can restrict them to your truck routes, we've done that, and you can regulate them in terms of what they're supposed to do with the trucks, but shutting down altogether, I don't know, that would, we'd have to do a little work to see if you have the authority to do that.
Well, I just like that kind of option, if they're not going to do anything about it. I mean, I'd like them to know that that's something that we're looking at, if they don't shape up and get these trucks up to where they're supposed to be, because, you know, we've got Fountain Hills Boulevard, you know, we've got people walking on the shoulder of those roads, too.
Madam Mayor, another option that we could look at, it just requires bringing another agency in. It could be ADOT or DPS, who do, DPS does have a truck squad to do it. It's a matter of lining up to see if they could come in and help us with it.
Okay.
One option that I'm going to look at, and I don't know that this can be done, is possibly getting those truck inspectors on the job site before they even hit the road. I don't know if that will work, but it is something that we thought about.
It sounds like that's a good step.
You don't want an unsafe truck even hitting the road.
Right.
So I'll look into that and
Great.
Deal with them next week.
Councilman Yates?
Madam Mayor, thank you. Go ahead, Nick. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I, I, no problem. I was just going to say that Captain Latourneau's idea, I was wanting to chime in and mention ADOT. When I commute into downtown, down the 87, there is a considerable amount of ADOT enforcement trucks and units on the 87. Just checking out trucks between the 202, probably past Shea, but I expect to see if I'm around Shea or Fort McDowell. So, I love your idea of getting in some, using some of those state resources since we pay for them, so, good idea. Thanks.
Okay. Councilman Yates?
Madam Mayor, from an operational standpoint, is there any way to add this? Because I don't want the captain's budget to be affected. Is there some way we can?
Well, I think what we certainly look at is, and really emphasize that this is a problem that they're creating for us.
Exactly.
And so, we need to have them take more responsibility for it and be accountable. So, that's what we'll be pushing.
Excellent.
I agree with that.
Yes.
Well, thanks. So you do whatever you can, all the steps that you say you're going to take, and then you let us know if that's working or not.
Definitely. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else from anyone?
Thanks, ma'am.
Thank you, Captain. Okay, and we are up to call to the public. Speaker parts?
Mayor, we have two. Donna Brinkmeyer, followed by Robert Ricken.
All right, Robert wants to go first.
Here we go, okay.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor and council members.
And you're Robert?
Ricken.
And you live in Fountain Hills?
Yes.
Okay, just for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Robert Ricken. I'm an electrical engineer, and I own one of the homes on a hill overlooking Fountain Park. I'm here this evening to present to you results of a survey. Last week, for five consecutive evenings from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, Ted Blank and Donna Brinkmeyer sat alongside the path around Fountain Lake and asked every person who walked by to express preference for either current bollard lights or for the simulated zero-glare, zero-uplight bollards. The zero-glare fixture was simulated by placing temporary round caps over four existing bollards to block the glare and direct the light down onto the path. Over 200 people were willing to express their opinions. After seeing how much more attractive, safe and easy on the eyes the lighted path was without the glare, 201 of them, and I heard, I understand, two more people signed tonight here in the meeting, at the meeting, that's 96%, were eager to sign the petition we bring to you tonight. That is nearly unanimous, rarely seen in many public issues. The petition states in part, "We are in favor of lighting the path around Fountain Lake, but not shining light into the eyes of walkers or onto homes around the lake. We call on the mayor and town council to demand the companies we hired to design and install the pathlights be held responsible for replacing them with truly full cutoff fixtures that light only the path and that this be done without any further cost to the town. We ask only for what our town was promised and our tax dollars paid for." The people surveyed represent the people who actually used the park after dark and who are most affected by the uplight and glare from the bollard lights. Not all of the signers are residents of Fountain Hills. Some were winter visitors and a few were from neighboring communities that enjoy our park and dark skies. While most of the signers are Fountain Hills residents, we recognize that visitors have a tremendous economic impact on our town, and we chose to include them in our survey. Madam Mayor and council members, we paid more than a quarter million dollars for bollards that we promised, that were promised to be zero-uplight, full cutoff luminary and nighttime-friendly. They turned out to be none of these. By direct survey, 96% of the people who use the park want the path lighted without the glare. We offer you this mandate from the people to demand that we receive what the town paid for and what was promised. Once again, we urge the council to insist that the companies hired to design the park lighting and who made misrepresentations about their characteristics be held responsible for replacing every one of these bollards with truly full cutoff fixtures without further cost to the town. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next.
My name is Donna Brinkmeyer, and I am a resident of Fountain Hills. Madam Mayor and Town Council, good evening. Ted Blank and I had the opportunity on Monday to meet with Town Manager Grady Miller and Community Services Director Mayor. We shared with them some of the information that Mr. Ricken just spoke of and the content I'm about to share with you now. We appreciated the opportunity to talk with them, and we look forward to working with the town closely to address this lighting concern. The statistics that Robert Ricken just quoted tell only a part of what Ted and I learned during our five nights in the park. While folks overwhelmingly desired fully shielded lights with no uplight or glare, it was the comments they made and the stories they told that really made the case for the town rectifying this problem. Many of those folks are here tonight. Would you please stand? Thank you. Some folks were angry, some were skeptical, but nearly everybody had something to say. Comments included objections to the money spent. "We sure didn't get what we paid for. A quarter million dollars and they didn't get it right? I think the town got snookered. The town spent all that money without doing a field test of the lights in the park first? If this is the way the town spends money, they better not ask me for more taxes." Other objections pertain to the lights themselves. A woman who lives on Panorama reported, "When I go to bed and sleep on my right side, those lights shine right in my eyes." A young couple pushing a baby stroller said, "We came from Phoenix to A young couple pushing a baby stroller said, "We came from Phoenix to see the stars. What happened?" A morning walker feared for his safety. "I walk at five in the morning, with all the glare, I can't see the coyotes until I'm right on them." A professional, award-winning landscape lighting designer exclaimed, "How did they let them put in those glare bombs?" And from a nine-year-old boy, "You can see a lot more stars if you stand near the bollards with the hats," referring to the snow saucers that we put on top of them. Saturday night, after we packed up our table and survey, my husband and I took a walk around the park. When we got to the parking lot on Panorama, a fellow got out of his car and approached us. "Can you help us?" He asked. "What can we do for you?" We replied. He responded, "Where can we see the Milky Way? When I lived here, I could see it in the park. My wife and I brought our grandkids from Mesa to see the Milky Way. They've never seen it. We can see the Milky Way again. We can attract visitors to our town with our night skies, and the council can regain the trust of its citizens by being good stewards of their tax dollars." Yet again, I urge the council to insist that the companies hired to design the park lighting be held responsible for replacing every one of these bollards with truly full-cut-off fixtures without further cost to the town. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so, as everyone knows, we can't respond to Call to the Public, because it's not agendaized, but I guess I can safely say that we have all your information, and we know that our town manager and Mark Mayor are looking into it. That's all I can say. Can say more in person than we can up here. Okay. So, let's go on to our consent agenda items.
Move approval.
We have six of them, as written. And a second, and roll call vote, please.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Councilmember DePorter?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Yates?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Magazine?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Legay?
Aye.
Mayor seven-zero.
Thank you. Regular agenda items, consideration of a certificate of modification to NLLC regarding Eagles Nest Parcel Eleven, Lot 245, and authorizing its signature. Grady, is that N or EN?
EN.
EN, okay.
Um, Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a cleanup item, the very last thing to be done in the settlement agreement modification we did a couple of years ago. This is the final exchange of the properties happened, the property in Eagles Nest, this is what was parcel five, is that correct? That was swapped with the parcel that the fire station's being designed on right now. This is a change to the cover sheet of the plat, it's kind of our technical correction way to go about making sure that it's memorialized on the recorded document the same way it is in the settlement agreement. Be happy answering questions, yeah.
Okay. Questions for Andrew? Any council discussion on this item? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any speaker cards?
The mayor.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Mayor seven-zero.
All right. Discussion with possible directions to staff related to any item, including the League of Cities Legislative Bulletin. Grady, did you get anything for discussion?
I did, actually. Uh, sorry, I was gonna call you Congressman Allen, but Councilmember Allen Magazine brought to my attention Senate Bill fourteen-eighty-seven, which he wishes to speak about.
Okay, well, that was brought up before, so I'm sure everybody's familiar with it. Drive it ahead.
Twelve fifty-seven.
Oh, twelve fifty-seven, okay.
Yeah, I learned
Which one is that?
I'm sorry?
Which one is it?
That's the one signed by the governor apparently today, regarding
Oh, okay.
Taking away state shared revenues if you violate. I'm gonna, I'm gonna
All right, I thought it was a different one, but go ahead.
I was going to talk about this and ask for a motion to write to the governor, but apparently we're too late, but I still want to comment. The governor apparently signed this legislation today, and it would reduce cities and towns' state shared revenues, and allow any lawmaker to direct the Attorney General to investigate a city or county that passes a regulation that may conflict with state law or its constitution. And if you're in conflict, if a town or city is in conflict with state law, the state treasurer is directed to withhold state shared revenues until the problems resolve. This came about apparently because some towns, some cities passed ordinances relating to things like banning of plastic grocery bags, and I guess there are a few other things, and legislators up in arms over this. In my view, this is an absolute stranglehold on local government, and it's basically saying to us, and to our citizens, that we're not gonna have self-determination, and citizens can't decide what's best for them. You know, you hear a lot of talk about nanny-government. Well, to me, this is the, this legislation is the ultimate in nanny-government, and it's an outrageous overreach by the Arizona Legislature. Years ago, I published a book on the relationship between the federal government and the states, in which I said that states were the powerless ponds of the federal government. We face the same thing here. Our cities and towns are powerless ponds of our legislature, in my opinion. This is an incredible power grab, and it opens the floodgates for the legislature to stop us from doing all kinds of things that they may not, in their wisdom, think are wise. So I just wanted to express myself on this and indicate how outrageous I think this is, but I have to say, it doesn't entirely surprise me. Thank you.
Okay, any further, any comments on that one?
Madam Mayor, just for clarification, that was fourteen-eighty-seven.
That was fourteen-eighty-seven.
Signed by the governor today.
Signed by the governor today. Okay, any other comments on that? Any other issues? Okay, let's, then we have summary, we have nothing on the town manager's discussion direction, unless we have something, no, and then we go on to activities, and I do have a couple of things. No? No? Okay. Well, you know, if you have to. Okay, just go as quickly as I can, okay? But I, you know, I gotta show them the food bag, because they worked so hard for this. Food for Kids, in which I participated with my Mayor's Youth Council and with the Mayor's Youth Council Coordinator Heather Ware, Vice Mayor Legay was there. I was presented with the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-bag of food that was packed, and this was given to me by Pastor Adele of New Journey Lutheran Church. Every year for the last six years, they met in the community center and bagged these, and the food is distributed to various services, like our own extended hands food banks, veteran organizations, and many more. There's the nice story with pictures in The Times, if you'd like to know more about this, and hopefully, you'll all participate next year. On behalf of the town, I welcomed, once again, those participating in the hike for the homeless that takes place every year at McDowell Mountain Park. Their focus is to help the homeless in any way, but primarily to find them jobs, to get them off the streets, to give them a second chance at a good life. Our anti-drug, anti-alcohol school coalition had a meeting, we had a very successful essay and poster contest, there was a luncheon and awards for the winners. We also discussed the Arizona Youth Survey. Our high school and middle school students in grades eight, ten, and twelve participated in the survey, which is given every two years by the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission. The survey examines substance abuse, bullying, et cetera, then compares the results with previous years, as well as state and national averages. We also discussed the results of a specific teen focal group, one of which was marijuana, and that was my Mayor's Youth Council participated in that. It's helpful to gauge the attitude of the students towards marijuana and get some positive suggestions from them. Now, if you were at the kite festival, we had a very successful kite festival, where our sky over Fountain Park was full of beautiful kites, and the kids had so much fun, so did the grandparents. We were honored to have the Consul General of Pakistan, Abdul Jabbar Memmen, attend the festival, and his consulate had a booth displaying traditional Pakistani items. Just quickly, a list of other activities that I participated in representing our town, the Grand Canyon Winery Ribbon Cutting, and along with Town Manager Grady Miller, we attended the Noon Rotary's Annual Fire and Police Awards. I also attended the Mayor's East Valley Prayer Breakfast, held this year in Chandler. I visited the site of our new trailhead, and I know some others on the council have already done that, and spoke before the Noon Rotary and the Sunset Kiwanis. Of course, today, wearing of the green, I participated in our St. Patrick's Day Festival, both to welcome the crowd, and I was supposed to pour beer, but I was involved in this other thing at the park, so I couldn't do that, but I did get there and welcome everybody. Okay, I gotta sneak this in, this is my favorite event. A reminder to all parents and grandparents of young kids, Saturday, March twenty-six, at Golden Eagle Park, the ballfields will be filled with thousands of eggs, and Happy Bunny will be on hand to take pictures with the kids. The event is free because of sponsorship by the town, the Goyana team, and Republic Services, so get there early, the egg scramble goes off at nine AM, and the eggs disappear in seconds. Okay, with the signal there, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
In a second?
Seven.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.